Good evening. It is April 22nd, 2025. I'm now calling this regular city council meeting of the City of Bastrop to order at 6:30 PM. We're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance from Brianna Martinez in Santiago Mondragon, the students from Cedar Creek Elementary.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
You all stay up here. We're going to take a picture.
Take your picture.
Okay, let's give them a hand. We will now have our invocation by Arthur Banks, City of Bastrop Police Chaplain.
Let us pray. Eternal God, source of all our wisdom and justice, we acknowledge you in this gathering tonight. In this season, may every council member be reminded of the trust placed in them through the daily concerns, hopes, and needs of the citizens they represent. As this council convenes, may each individual be granted clarity and thought of purpose. Let their deliberations be guided by insight, compassion, ensuring that the decisions made here reflect the best for what is best for the community at whole. May all in attendance be reminded of the importance of listening, not only to those of influence, but especially those whose voice are often overlooked. Where there is tension, may peace be sought. Where there is uncertainty, may direction be found. And where there is division, may unity be pursued. Let this meeting be a reminder that leadership is not about personal interests or party affiliation, but about the human service to the people. May the council be reminded to focus on the well-being of all of its residents, families, youth, seniors, and every person who calls Bastrop home. As the pressures of this season bring about varying opinions and emotions, may we, all who lead, participate, strive to find common ground, acting always with integrity and respect. May wisdom be granted to every member of this body, peace to every citizen of this city, and progress to every neighborhood within. And above all, may justice, fairness, unity define the spirit and the outcome of this meetings. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Go and be seated, please. So the first thing on our agenda, it says executive session, but we are not going to convene into a closed executive session. We are going to discuss this topic in public. We're going to discuss the implications of the City of Austin's Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project on the City of Bastrop's water supply. This is an important topic, and it's one that we want to learn about and our citizens to learn about so that there are no concerns or fears that are unfounded because of something that happened in the back room. This is a kind of a public discussion. I will also, once council has had the opportunity to ask questions of the city manager, if people in the audience have questions, I would literally just raise your hand, we'll fill out the form, and we can ask those too, because we just want to make sure that we've covered the topic adequately and, you know, maybe we didn't think of all the questions. So, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Normally, I am not really nervous or anxious about anything on the agenda because this is my 23rd year. However, this particular topic brings me great pause. And it brings me great pause because, number one, we just learned about it. Number two, the speed in which this is being, I feel forced, on the City of Bastrop. And three, our lack of information on the topic at hand. So, I've got some slides to present. There is a hearing tomorrow in Austin at which I will be testifying, and I want to bring the council and the residents to full transparency. So, House Bill 1523 was filed by Representative Gertis to prevent what is known as well injection as part of the City of Austin's Aquifer Recovery and Storage Project. This is part of Austin's long-term water conservation and water plan that is set to carry beyond 2030. The City of Bastrop was invited to a meeting at the Capitol on April 7th, and this is, Representative Gertis filed the bill in December. In attendance were Commissioner Carmack, Commissioner Glass, as a representative of Aqua, the board that he sits on in the county, Dacey Cameron with Aqua, Elvis Hernandez with the Lost Pines Conservation District, Andy Weir with the Simsboro Aquifer Watershed Protection, and a whole heck of a lot of the City of Austin Water Department staff and attorneys, as well as Rep. Gertis and his staff, as well as Mayor Kirk Watson with the City of Austin. The meeting started with some discussion about injection into the aquifer as part of Austin's long-term storage and recovery. The premise of the project is that we lose a lot of water through evaporation, and so we should store it underground. Theoretically, sounds wonderful, sounds like it's feasible. There are three pretty successful projects in the state, including the San Antonio Project, which is in the Edwards Aquifer. This is the bill. This is HB 1523, which was sent to committee, and the hearing is at 8 o'clock tomorrow. Essentially, it identifies specifically Bastrop as being a Bastrop County, as a county where this cannot happen. It would prevent, it would make this type of project illegal, not viable, et cetera. So, what is aquifer storage and recovery? It's a water management technique where water is stored underground in an aquifer during periods of abundance, i.e. when we have wet periods, the City of Austin would draw from its water supplies, including L.C.R.A., including Lake Travis and various water supplies. It would treat that water, and then it would store it in an aquifer. And it would store it in the Cariso Wilcox Aquifer and/or the Simsboro Aquifer. Why is that important for us? They've identified about 700 acres in page, and that is the Cariso Wilcox Aquifer, and depending on the field testing, they may move to the Simsboro Aquifer. Of concern to me is that while these projects can be successful, they are not always successful. So, from the City of Austin's own timeline, they are going to test and refine the technology. And so, it's that testing that is of great concern. Injecting treated water into an aquifer may lead to the leaching of metals, including arsenic, and contamination of the aquifer. Several, several questions and concerns still remain. Number one is that we would have a lot of community in put. This project was first planned in Lee County. Lee County came up in arms, and Lee County was removed from a project viability site, and then it was moved to Bastrop County. And it's been a little bit quiet, and again, unless Rep. Gertis had filed the bill, we probably would have not known a whole heck of a lot. So, why is this of concern? Number one, we weren't made aware of advances to the project until the bill was filed and under a 30-day time limit to reach a memorandum of understanding. There's an MOU that they're requesting to keep the bill from moving forward, and that bill would require the City of Bastrop to agree to certain off-ramps. I can't even agree to an on-ramp because we just don't have enough information. And there were key stakeholders that were left out. WCID number two, this is also a very important water supply, and as the City of Smithville, they were not at the table either. We don't have any information about the project other than the approximate acreage in page, and if not viable, they would move to the Simsboro Aquifer, which is the City of Bastrop's primary water supply. And they keep telling us about desktop modeling or other information, but we've requested that information since that very first meeting, and it has not been provided. Again, I'm going to tell you, three times we've requested information, it has not been provided. The issue that was told to me was that there were legalities in some of the documents, including where the location of some of those lines would lie. And my response was, well, it can go attorney to attorney, and it'd be attorney-client privilege if there is some super-secret information that's in there. But one of the key conversations that is of super-concern is the word eminent domain was used. Now, Mayor Watson said eminent domain is off the table, but I want to remind this council that there is not one council who can bind the hands of another council. So while eminent domain may be off the table for this particular council, it may not be off the table for another council. And eminent domain is for the lines that are going to reach whatever water supply back to the City of Austin. Not enough community engagement has occurred. We just don't know what we don't know. And again, it could be a very viable project, however, without the sharing of information that we've requested, not just myself, Lost Pines, Andy's group, we've continued to request the information, and it has not been made available. So again, treated water stored in the aquifer can potentially lead to metal contamination. Why? Because the water goes through various treatment methods, and it is sometimes too clean, too pure, and when it's injected back. And so, some of the test product, some of the test is going to be, how do we get that water pH perfect to inject it back into the aquifer? City of Bastrop residents rely on the Simsboro, right? That's our primary water supply. It is not a secondary or an ancillary water supply to the City of Austin. So my question became, why not your backyard? Why our backyard? I don't have an answer to that, other than I can tell you, probably the environmentalists in Travis County would come up in arms. Again, I don't know that it's a completely bad project, but I don't know that it's a good project. And without having enough information, I feel we can't just stand idly by. We have to help Gertis get the bill through. So, the rule of capture, why, again, why does this matter? Well, the theory is, I'm going to use a number for example, if they were to inject 100 gallons of water into the aquifer, they're only going to extract 95 gallons, and the other five gallons would go to Aqua Water Supply. So, when I walked into the meeting, there was conversation about, well, can we raise that 5% to another percent? I have no interest in that raising because, again, I don't know what it's going to do. None of us know what it's going to do just yet, and without the information we've been requesting about, what desktop information do they have? It becomes very concerning. The rule of capture means you are allowed to take what's under you. And so, if the, with some caveats of groundwater conservation districts that I'll click on the next page, but the rule of capture is if I put it in, I get to take it out, or if it's under me, I get to take it out. And so, if that landowner has leased, or the City of Austin has purchased, barring any other rule, they'd be able to take out what they put in. The speed of that can cause some serious harm to neighboring wells, to neighboring property owners. It can also cause land subsidence. Again, we haven't worked out any of those details. What are those off-ramps? What is the withdrawal rate? We don't know any of that information. Sorry, this text is small. Groundwater conservation districts, such as the Lost Pines Conservation District, are really the only ones that have the ability to modify the rule of capture, and even they have limits. They can only regulate large groundwater withdrawals, but withdrawals under 25,000 gallons a day from a well located on 10 acres or more generally remain exempt. And there are 99 groundwater districts covering 144 counties, but recently, in 2012, the Supreme Court ruled that landowners have a vested right to a water under their property. And in 2013, the Fourth Court of Appeals said that super-strict regulation would constitute a taking to the property owner. So, we're stuck between law that hasn't caught up, we're stuck between property rights, and we're stuck with the 800-pound gorilla that is the City of Austin, attempting to do something that we don't have enough information about that stands to put our water supply at risk. And so, my goal for today is that we provide a resolution in support of the bill. We asked if the bill moved forward and this was prevented, what would this do to the project? And the City of Austin said it would essentially kill the project because council would not allow a project that is against the law essentially to move forward. So what they're hoping for is that the city would enter into a memorandum of understanding to show the committee that we are all willing partners. I'm not sure we're a willing partner just yet because, again, I don't have enough information. What happens if the wells are contaminated? What does mitigation look like? One of the comments I heard was, well, if the well is contaminated, we'll hook them to a public water supply. Well, that's Aqua's public water supply. Does that resident want a bill? Does that resident want a monthly bill? I mean, there's too many questions left to be answered. And again, dropping the levels too quickly is also an issue. What is that retrieval rate supposed to be? So, on the table here, there is a pro and cons of water aquifer and storage. I mean, the pro is that, yes, you lose less water to evaporation, yes, you're able to store it. And the cons are, obviously, if you don't treat it properly, the contamination to the aquifer is very real, and the contamination to people is very real, not to mention what we do to neighboring wells of farmers and ranchers in the area. So my feeling is not enough information equals risky to Bastrop. Any questions?
Thank you. And first, thank you, Mayor Protem Kirkland, for putting this before the people. It shouldn't be talked about in the back room. This is y'all's water. This is y'all's government. We work for you, so that everything needs to be done in front of you. So thank you for doing that. Not really a question, my whole concern is what you brought up. So, what about the farmer and his water supply? It's kind of you're being gobbled up by the big monster of Austin, right? And then you have no water in your well for your farm. But the other thing is the point, and my critical point is, if you want to do this, Austin, you do it in your own yard. You don't do it in our yard. So I am absolutely in support of a resolution to support HB 1523.
Madam City Manager, what type of additional information would you like to receive from them?
So I'd like the data of their desktop model. Where do they have the wells? What are the potential test sites? What are their injection rates? What type of water? Is it reclaimed water? Is it treated? Is it just treated water? How is it treated? What are the contaminants? Because no matter how much you treat water, you never remove all of the hormones, you never remove all of the medications, you never remove 100% of anything. And so, I'd like to know, what do those test sites look like? What is the treatment possibility? What is the treatment method? How do we find out when the off-ramp is? What other monitoring wells are in the site? How do we know when something has failed?
Does the injection of the water bypass the natural filtering that takes place? You know, it rains, things form into the valleys, and you have streams, and then ultimately that sinks into the earth and goes into an aquifer and so on, but it's very deep underground, takes quite a long time for the water to get from ground level down into the aquifer. So it goes through a tremendous amount of natural filtering. So I guess I'm wondering, are they going to be bypassing that?
This is a bypass. It's a direct injection.
Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. So, I'm trying to wrap my brain around, like you said, do it in their backyard. Why aren't they doing, why are they picking other counties?
I don't have an answer to that. I do not have an answer. I've asked it for the last three meetings, we had a meeting on the 7th, the 14th, and the 21st. The meeting on the 7th, it was too late to put it on the council agenda that we had on the 8th, which is why you're hearing about it today. I've asked it three different times, and I don't have an answer, three different times.
To your knowledge, they have the ability to put it in their backyard. You don't even know that?
I don't even know that.
It's really strange. This is kind of a strange, strange thing that they're asking because they're reaching out, knowing the implications. I'm assuming these, all these implications have been discussed, and they're reaching out to other counties. And this is strictly Austin.
City of Austin.
Right now. Because I'm looking and seeing that El Paso, Kerrville.
And San Antonio.
And San Antonio. Do we have, we don't have any data from those other cities that are currently?
The San Antonio, the Edwards Aquifer is a pretty successful aquifer storage project, and the cities that rely on that aquifer storage project were able to delay going from stage two to stage four drought restriction. So that is a successful one. My feeling about that one is that's the sauce, that's the San Antonio water supply serving San Antonio residents. They're doing it in their backyard. Same thing for Kerrville, same thing for El Paso.
Not reaching beyond. Okay. Thank you.
It's really the lack of information, and I think I have expressed my frustration to the 100th level, probably being what I'm going to call the capital B in the room, when I keep asking for information and we don't receive it. And I said, I'm going to present this to council in executive session, and I'm going to, they're going to ask me questions, and I'm going to say, I don't know. And I don't know because they haven't provided it. They provided a one-sheeter, sort of a topical, this is the project, it's the same thing, sort of, that's on their website. Elvis with Lost Pines, and Andy with the Simsboro Aquifer Watershed Protection Group, they had more commentary and more information at meeting two, which was just more questions that yet were not answered. At meeting three, those questions were still disregarded, and we had what was a framework for a timeline for a memorandum of understanding. None of us, not Lost Pines, not Aqua, not us, have had a chance to convene our boards to even get an onboard situation of what a memorandum of understanding would look like. And yet, the bill is on the floor tomorrow. Well, the bill is in committee tomorrow at 8:00 AM.
Councilperson Meyer.
Sylvia, when Lee County fought it, because they were aware way much in advance than us, what was their process? How did they do that?
I'm not sure. I keep hearing the word militia, but I'm not. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Lee County, Representative Cul curse was successful recently. Austin had a similar measure that would require recycling, sort of like our rendering plant, but they don't allow it in their city limits. And so, there was a developer who was wanting to do it in Lee County, and Lee County essentially said, if you mandate it, you do it in your backyard, don't come do it in ours.
So, with our support in bringing a resolution to support HB 1523, that would be us speaking, but also our citizens, right? Can?
Yes. And our resolution mirrors what Lee County.
Great. So, us being proactive and doing something, we need y'all also, everyone, listening, sitting here to yell, yell really loud about this, because this is our yard, and we want to keep our water safe in our yard.
Do we have a copy of the resolutions that you?
Yes, Andres. Has very scary words like arsenic in it.
So I'm going to open this up for some public discussion as well. Is there anyone in the crowd that has a question that you'd like to have answered in this, on this topic? It's okay if no one does, but, yeah, come on up here to the microphone. So before you speak, tell us your name and your address.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. George Furle?
Yes.
105 Kamooki Court, Bastrop, Texas.
Thank you.
Why would a town do that? Like, why, how does a town benefit from doing that?
How does the City of Bastrop benefit from Austin's?
Or both?
So, one, you, well, I'm going to say it as simple as I can. The contracts on how they acquire water are relatively inexpensive. If you can acquire it inexpensive and store it during times of abundance, then during times of drought, you can essentially retrieve it. And so, it's a take-or-pay. I'm going to take it, or I'm going to pay for it anyway. I may as well take it, and I'm going to take it, and I'm going to store it. It could, again, be a very plausible project, but without knowing the specifics on the well sites or any of that information, it's pretty questionable on my part.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
At the microphone.
Carol Spencer, 126 Brussels Drive. Protect your water. I was five months pregnant with my son when I pulled into my driveway and there was a pink slip in my door telling me not to drink my water. I was in New Jersey, and Picatinny Arsenal was north of us, and we drank all groundwater. And our well water was polluted. And then, as you all know, I sat on a governing body when we had to shut down wells, and we had to drill new wells. And water moves underground. It doesn't stay in one place. When I was mayor, the mayor of Rockaway Township next door had a well that he had to shut down. And he wanted an interconnection into our water because he didn't have enough, and we were in the middle of a drought. And I said, emergency only, I'm willing to do that interconnection, but it will not be permanent because of the way the water flows and it comes down. So, you know, I applaud you for not doing this right away and really, really looking at the water issues, because once it's polluted, I was five months pregnant, and I had been showering in that water, and that notice said one-minute showers, and I couldn't drink the water. They had to bring in Army Corps of Engineers trucks. And I'm not saying that's going to happen to you, but I lived it. And Rockaway Borough well, you can look it up, it was a federal superfund site, and they had to install carbon filtration and air strippers. Really expensive. Now it's the cleanest water around in that part of New Jersey. But when you have to go through that, I really do what you can to not have to do that. Number two is, I just spent today at the Capitol, and you can go online for members of the public, you can go to comments.house.texas.gov. You don't have to go in at 8:00 AM. You can go on tonight, and you can comment as members of the council, members of the public, on this particular bill. You have to scroll through the bills that are in certain committee hearings, and you'll get down to, under the Natural Resources Committee, HB 1523 by Gertis, and then you can type in all of your comments and submit them, and every member of that committee will get your comment. So I urge the public to do that. Thank you.
And specifically, just for clarification, 1523 is in support of making this not legal, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So you don't want to go there and say, I'm opposed to this, because it turns out that that's not the right direction on that one?
Correct. You want to support Bill 1523, which would prevent this type of activity in Bastrop And, you know, my comment to the City of Austin was, let the bill move forward. If Austin has enough desktop modeling and has enough information, and you want to bring it back next session and say, it's harmless, here's our data, and you want to put it before the public, then there's an alternate bill that can be filed that would rescind that bill. But at least give us the opportunity to, you know, put a stop sign on and give a great pause.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, I was thinking the same thing that the first gentleman asked, and I didn't want to ask it because I didn't want to make it seem like, well, if there was something in it for us that it would, it might make a difference. But what I think, what he was primarily asking, yeah, what was in it for Austin, I think we kind of get that. What would be in it? What are they offering us? I don't, I don't hear anything.
Ostensibly, and I really wish Aqua was here, but ostensibly, there is this excess water supply. If they put in 100, but they only take out 95, there's this excess five that Aqua could deal with. There would be a pipeline that Austin would build, and Aqua would have access to that pipeline, meaning Aqua could be the intermediary between City of Austin and City of Bastrop.
Yeah, so, no.
Again, I would feel more comfortable if there was information about the well size, if there was information about the process, if there was a little bit more information about the science. It may very well be the best It may very well be the best thing since sliced bread for everybody around, but without having the information, I am, I am very hesitant to do anything but support the bill.
Counselperson Foster.
Yeah, I agree, there's not enough information to be willing participants in the conversation. So I agree, I'm passing this resolution tonight.
Sylvia, do you have, have you been communicating with Lee County at all through, to find out anything about their process, or?
No, I have not.
Any information? Is that, is that something we're gonna do? Okay, thank you.
And this, this resolution is pretty much verbatim to Lee County's.
Okay, got it, thank you. Just for those that are curious, the resolution finds that this is in the public interest, that the city and its citizens are dependent upon the groundwater from the Simsboro Aquifer, which is located within the Corizo Wilcox Aquifer for our water supply. It's strongly being considered for the proposed site of this project that we're talking about, that it presents potential negative impacts to the aquifer with a list of what those might It could entail significant potential harm to essential groundwater resources and private property rights, and provide no compensatory benefit to the citizens of city of Bastrop. And the city seeks to have a better understanding of the potential health, safety, and long-term water supply risks, and therefore, the city supports House Bill number 1523 that we've talked about. So that's, that's what the text of this is. And then it says that all of these things are true, the city manager should gather additional information and, and evaluate the potential impact, requests the city attorney work with the city manager to draft possible comments to appropriate state agencies, and authorizes the city manager to submit comments to the House Committee for Natural Resources in support of this bill. So that's what we have. Did you have a question, Ms. Green?
Hello, Heather Green, 2007 Pecan Street. I just want to get clarification on what specifically citizens can do to support you guys and Sylvia tomorrow. Is there something specific that we need to do to make sure that they hear our voices? Because, like I've stood up here and said several times, our voices do matter, so I want to make sure that there is no confusion as to what is expected or what can be done by us to make sure that the city of Austin hears us and listens. Go there.
Yes, the, the link is what Ms. Spencer discussed, that is the link especially, and you would be in support of HB 1523, which would prevent.
Counselperson Meyer.
Mayor Protam, do you need a motion?
I suspect we are likely at that time.
I'd like to make a motion for city council to bring forth resolution R2025-85 regarding the HB 1523 and the resolution.
Mayor Protam, if I may, I recommend calling agenda item number five, which is the action item.
Certainly, thank you.
For items posted under number four.
So if you were ever curious, that's what executive session looks like. So we are now going to take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in executive session, which you guys sat through. So we now have a motion on the table from Counselperson Meyer, a second from Counselperson Plunkett, to approve resolution 2025-85, which I summarized for you briefly. Are there any other discussion for council? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam City Manager. I'll also note that Butch Carmack and I spoke briefly on other topics, and he said that you were a bulldog doing a great job on this. That was the B-word he used. Bulldog. That's what you meant earlier, right?
I think there were other B-words in that room, but I'll, I'll take that one.
Bulldog, yes. Okay, so we are now going to move on to item 6A, Mayor Protam's report. So first, there has been significant cleanup at the old German casino. The building has been completely removed from the site, and 9,000 bricks, the metal roof, the wooden flooring, and then a good number of the foundation stones that were sort of buried underneath it were all captured and saved, and the mortar was removed from the bricks, and so those have been stored in a, a city wastewater treatment plant yard, which we can then use for a tribute structure at some point in the near future. And so I would just want to say thank you to the citizens that worked so hard on, on that for the fundraising to, to pay for the capturing of all of those materials. Next, on April 10th, we had the Cendaro groundbreaking, where they're getting started on their projects. There's gonna be numerous restaurants and a health and wellness building center that they, they showed us, and so that's kind of exciting, lots of new places to eat for our residents. And then on April 14th, we had a, a grand opening for LS Electric, a Korean company. I've spent quite a bit of time in South Korea for my professional employment, and so we did some Korean cultural exchanges, and I talked about, you know, how to say hello in Korean and, and Texan, and, and how one does toasts and those kinds of things. It was kind of fun. But the best part of the evening is that their CEO announced a $240 million additional investment into the city of Bastrop. This company makes circuit breakers, and they intend to grow with Bastrop, and they intend to grow to be number one in the United States for this particular product. And so, yeah, it's 200 jobs they're estimating, and so this will be good for the city of Bastrop. And that's what I've got. Thank you. We're going to move on to council members' reports. Let's start with Counselperson Foster.
Happy Earth Day, y'all. Wanted to talk to you about Bird Lover Weekend that's coming up next weekend. It's our fourth annual Bird Lovers Weekend, celebrating our Bird City certification and also celebrating World Migratory Bird Day. So we've got a full weekend of events on Friday night, I'll run through a few of them. On Friday morning, we've got bird walking, bird watching hikes, we've got meet the purple Martins at Bob Bryant, we've got beer and bird songs at 6:02. Can I get a bird call from the audience, Mike? There you go. He'll be leading beer and bird calls. It's like a trivia where they do certain calls and you guess it, and it's very fun. That's from, on five o'clock Friday night. And then the First Friday Art Walk all of Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00 PM is gonna be bird themed up and down, all throughout downtown Bastrop. On Saturday morning, it starts off with a bird watching big sit at Fisherman's Park, once again, meet the purple Martins. The highlight, maybe? I don't know, there's so many highlights. The Sky Kings Raptor Program, they're gonna be bringing their birds and having that fly-in at the back of the Lost Pines Art Center. And there's all sorts of presentations at the Lost Pines Art Center, wildlife rescue, rehab program, Bastrop Birds, meet the purple Martins at City Hall. We have a new purple Martin house, and it's already full, so you're gonna get to meet all of those guys also on Saturday afternoon. Also, the bird hat competition is back. That's gonna be on Saturday night this year, vicious competition. And then the weekend festivities wraps up at Art After Dark at the Lost Pines Art Center. It's the opening reception for Free as a Bird, a collection of works depicting the native and migratory birds of this area at the Lost Pines Art Center. So thank you so much, that's, that's gonna be next weekend, just come out, it's gonna be very fun. And then I want to, if you would look at the screen, please, I want to turn your eyes to the screen. Y'all, Mr. Ken Lejeune passed away. Do y'all know Mr. Ken? I think he's only been in Bastrop five years. I've only known him for five years, but he's here from Lake Charles. He had the Little Red Budin and Cracklin Shop on Tahitian Drive, and to eat his food was to be a friend of him, because you couldn't get anywhere near his little restaurant and not be a friend of him, because he would be telling you stories and cooking for you. He was, he was quite the scene there on Tahitian Drive. So I just wanted to celebrate him here. He's got his sons taking care of things, and they're gonna have a big celebration of life for him in Lake Charles, but I wanted to celebrate the five years that we had him here in Bastrop, and just Godspeed with all of his family handling all the arrangements and the celebration in Lake Charles. So rest in peace, Mr. Lejeune, Mr. Ken, the gumbo man. Thanks, y'all.
Counselperson Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Good evening, Bastrop. So April 17th, I attended the Special Olympics Soccer Tournament here in Bastrop. I was told that that tournament being hosted here in the city is the envy of all of Texas. So they're gonna be reaching out to you, City Manager, to see how we can better partner, and possibly come back and talk about their event at one of our upcoming council meetings. She couldn't be here tonight, but she's gonna reach out to you. I want to thank all of the businesses for bringing back the music, the weather's warming up, and every weekend's been jam-packed with live music and live bands. So thank you, downtown Bastrop. And I also wanted to kind of give a little help to the Bastrop Live Music Foundation. They're having a fundraiser on May the 22nd to raise money for their music mentors and other programs that they offer in our community. Their organization is dedicated to promoting and supporting live music, music education, and offering resources for working musicians who live and work in Bastrop. So please visit their website to get more information about that. They're asking for people from the community and business, businesses in the city, if possible, to donate items for ticket raffles at their fundraiser. So anyone out there interested in assisting with that, they're looking for music instruments too, to give to the kids for donations. So please visit their website and help them out in that effort. Thank you.
Counselperson Plunkett.
If anybody else does such a good job, I'll rely on them.
Counselperson Meyer.
Thank you. So when we had the town cleanup quite a few weeks ago, I didn't mention a, a council member from Smithville that came to Bastrop and helped us clean our city up. So to return the favor, I need to let everybody know about the Smithville Jamboree coming up this weekend. So go over to Smithville, enjoy their time. Thank you so much to Kathy Meek, who came down and cleaned our town up. So let's support Smithville in that way, too. Also, I wanted to let you know that the Bear, the High School Bear softball team is playoff-bound. So let's all go out Friday night, I'm sorry, let's go out Thursday night, 6:00 at our softball here, field. So if you don't know where the softball field is, it's close to, Erhart Field, the football field, close to the railroad tracks, close to the high school, so you'll see it over there. It's not the one that's out off Lover's Lane, okay? That's the baseball field. Softball field's in town. So let's support the Lady Bears Thursday, 6:00. Friday, they're gonna play Hendrickson at 6:00 there, and then if a third game is needed, y'all, and we know, well, we might just take both of them and not have the third game, that's what we're gonna hope for, but if we do need it, guess where it's gonna be? It's gonna be here Saturday at 11:00 at our softball field. So on a Saturday, we can go out and support. And it's so important just for us to always support our kids, so I just ask our community, please go out and cheer on the Lady Bears in their softball game.
Thank you. We will move on to the city manager's report, 6C.
Super short and simple, our water wells are not online. I know, I know. I don't think anybody's more frustrated than Curtis and I. There's a part that has not received, I do not have an ETA. We are in, this is month four, they're overdue, so we're into liquidated damages. The bridge, the bridge, the bridge, the bridge. I would like council to hold a special meeting on April 29th that gets us to the bid award that gets us started. We are going to have a significant savings, I'm going to say, from the estimate of what that bridge repair was going to be, and so we have enough money in the $3 million that was originally set aside for the bridge. We have expended about 1.3, 1.4, is that correct? So we've got a little bit of money left to go ahead and start in anticipation of the bond issuance. So we'd like to get that started sooner rather than later. It is a 13-month project, so we'd like for it to be open by next summer.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item 6D, Presentation on Board and Commission Work Plans for the Cultural
Sylvia, we hit next. Hello, council, Mayor Protam, Michaela Joyce, Main Street Manager, but also Cultural Arts Commission Liaison. So I just wanted to kind of take the chance to show you guys the work plans that the commission has established. Our main focuses for the next year are finishing up our Bird Junction sculptures. We're kind of diving into First Friday, gonna make a little bit more of a push to make that bigger and greater and better than ever. We're working on some organizational restructuring, so just really getting us back in line with work plans and structure, and what expectations are, and what, just essentially everything we're doing, and making sure we're heading in the good direction and moving everything forward. We'd like to do a little bit more of a marketing push. We are hotel tax funded, so making sure that we're utilizing that money to advertise all of the great art and culture and great things we have here in the community, so making sure we're getting a, a marketing plan established. I'm gonna come back to you guys here in a few minutes to talk to you about a percent for the arts program. And then we are wanting to dive into a little bit of a research, research phase into a mural program for downtown, and then also looking at an outdoor venue music space. I've got some targets listed up there. Of course, we want to complete the sculptures, we'd like to increase our attendance for First Friday, that marketing strategy, present that, present, present the percent for the arts to you guys, and potentially get that moving forward, and then looking at mural feasibility. We don't have to get into this right now, because I know we've got budget stuff coming up around the corner, but to get all of that executed and done and moving swiftly forward, we are gonna come forward with an ask for a part-time cultural arts program coordinator. So do you have any questions related to cultural arts? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam, I missed something on my city manager's report.
Okay.
I do want to recognize our Public Works staff, who is in the audience. I have Curtis Hancock and some staff in the audience, and I would like them to come up and be recognized.
So which one of the wonderful things that they've done are we recognizing them for today?
All of them, actually. All of them, actually. These are the unsung heroes that, you know, when you turn on your water, it's clean, when you flush your toilet, it goes down, when something breaks, they show up. They are everywhere and not normally seen, because it always inevitably happens at 2:00 AM, right? When you guys get called out for a break, you get called out for any, any one of the things. So I did, and Curtis is over there quietly, but I do want to recognize Curtis, too, because Curtis, they answer the phone no matter what. And while we sit here and we like to get accolades, and the city manager's doing such a great job, the truth is, I could not do this job without these folks. I could not do this job without Curtis and the staff that's all right there behind me. So thank you for helping me look as good as I look and doing the best job that you can for the residents of Bastrop.
Thank you.
They also got kudos from a, from a resident not too long ago on how awesome of a job they did, and helping an elderly resident get some things done. So yes, I do want to make sure that we do give kudos where kudos is due.
So we're gonna move on to item 6E, and we have one, two, three, four, five proclamations. So the first one is recognition of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as Police Officer Week in the city of Bastrop.
Another group of unsung heroes. I have Chief Stefanik, who will come up, and, and her staff, and hopefully they don't get called out to a call here quickly, because this, too, is a group that often shows up, whether it's hot, it's cold, it's rainy, they're out, they put their lives in danger every single day, showing up to protect our residents. So I don't think there's enough claps to go around to recognize Police Officer Week. So from all of us, thank you, thank you, thank you. I believe we have a proclamation to read.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Whereas the citizens of Bastrop gather to recognize and honor our law enforcement officers for their faithful service and sacrifice while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy, and whereas there are more than 1,280,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bastrop Police Department, and whereas nearly 80,000 assaults against law enforcement officers. And whereas nearly eighty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine injuries. And whereas since seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Bastrop Police Department. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, one hundred and sixty-five fallen heroes throughout the nation have been killed in the line of duty, including nineteen from the state of Texas. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, fifty-two fallen heroes throughout the nation have been shot and killed in the line of duty, including five from the state of Texas. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC, and the names of the heroic Texas Peace Officers are engraved on the Texas Peace Officer Memorial in Austin, Texas. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas Congress has designated the calendar week that May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Now therefore, I, John Kirkland, Acting Mayor Protem of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May eleventh through May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five as Police Officer Week in the city of Bastrop to honor and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. And this has the seal of the city on it and a signature, and it is official.
Can I get the, can I get the council to take a picture with the officers? Hurry, before they get called out. Chief Stefanik, for your information, is one of the few female police chiefs, and in case you don't know, she's a pretty Billy Bad A Marine.
I hope these are in order.
Yes. This proclamation is recognizing firefighters. And for those of you who don't understand the life of a firefighter, they are doing more than fighting fires. They're providing assistance to EMS calls, they're doing fire inspections, they're helping business owners get open. So really, truly, again, unsung heroes, although police and fire get a little more attention than our Public Works guys, but nonetheless, they put their lives on the line every single day also. And I, I rib them a lot. I say, you know, you guys have a lot of time on your hands, I think I'm going to have you do laundry for the city and save on our uniform costs. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart and that of the residents for your selfless service every single day.
Whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May fourth to honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environment are as safe as possible. And whereas this day of recognition is an opportunity to show our appreciation for the courage, dedication, and unwavering commitment of firefighters who protect lives and property every day. And whereas the city of Bastrop expresses its heartfelt gratitude to the brave men and women of the Bastrop Fire Department who face dangerous conditions with professionalism and resilience, often putting themselves at risk to protect others. And whereas these first responders not only respond to fires and emergencies, but also engage in fire prevention, safety education, community outreach, and serve as role models of public service. And whereas International Firefighters' Day also serves to remember those firefighters who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty and support the families, friends, and colleagues they leave behind. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim May fourth, twenty twenty-five as International Firefighters' Day in the city of Bastrop and encourage all residents to recognize, honor, and thank the firefighters in our community for their heroic service and ongoing dedication to public safety. And this has been signed with the official seal of the city of Bastrop.
Police was all over the place. Eight G, Air Quality Awareness Week. I think we take for granted that we live in probably one of the most populated areas of the state, but yet we are blessed with such good and clean air, and we don't have some of the issues that some of our neighboring cities have. So May fifth through the ninth is always Air Quality Awareness Week, and we'd like to recognize that with this proclamation.
Proclamation of the city of Bastrop, Texas, whereas air quality can threaten our environment, economy, and the health of the residents of the Capital Area Council of Governments region. And whereas children, older adults, people with lung disease, and people with heart disease are particularly affected by poor air quality, which makes up about half of the residents in central Texas. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, air quality in the Austin-Round Rock-San Marcos Metropolitan Statistical Area, or MSA, was moderate or worse according to the air quality index nearly fifty percent of days. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, the Austin-Round Rock-San Marcos MSA exceeded the federal eight-hour ozone standard and the annual fine particulate matter standard, which increases the region's risk of being designated non-attainment. And whereas remaining in compliance with the national ambient air quality standards is important, not only for public health, but also for the region's economy and ability to, to conduct transportation planning. And whereas the goals of the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-six Austin-Round Rock-San Marcos MSA Regional Air Quality Plan are to maximize the probability of compliance with the NAAQS and minimize health and environmental impacts of air pollution. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has designated May fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-five, as National Air Quality Awareness Week. And whereas the city of Bastrop, along with the Capital Area Council of Governments, supports the efforts of the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to promote air quality. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim May fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-five as Air Quality Awareness Week in the CapCog Region and encourage the Bastrop community to act to be air-aware and educate themselves about local air quality by visiting CapCog's Air Central Texas website at aircentraltexas.org and by promoting air quality and air quality awareness within our region. And the official seal of the city is attached along with a signature. And so in recognition of this, everyone take a deep breath. Now six H is Bike Month in the city of Bastrop, and I understand we have some guests for this one.
Yes, Mayor Protem, not only do you have some guests, but you have some bells. This proclamation is Councilmember Fossler and Councilmember Meyer. Our prior Councilmember Jimmy Crouch, this is for the MS-150 Bike Race. And our hope is that folks come out and support and ring the bells. I think we have some extra bells we're going to bring out, so. Jimmy, would you like to get up and accept the proclamation?
Come on up here, both of you. So can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Mark Stein, I'm with Bike Texas. We are the statewide agency for bicycle and pedestrian safety access and education in the state of Texas.
Thank you very much.
Very happy to be here.
Excellent. Proclamation of the city of Bastrop, Texas, whereas the bicycle is a healthy, economical, convenient, and environmentally friendly form of transportation and an excellent tool for exploring Bastrop's wild and wondrous places. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents and visitors will experience the joy of bicycling in Bastrop through community events or simply by getting out and going for a ride, whether crossing the iconic Old Iron Bridge, soon, coming soon, winding through the Lost Pines, or exploring a trail less traveled. Whereas Bastrop is proud to be recognized as a bird city, tree city, music-friendly, and film-friendly Texas town, making every ride an opportunity to cruise past the music, murals, birds, and blossoms that color our community. And whereas our roadways, trails, and parks, including Fisherman's Park, Bob Bryant Park, The River Loop, and Bastrop State Park, offer cyclists of all ages places to gather, connect, and commute. And whereas bicycling improves public health, well-being, and quality of life, reduces pollution, grows the economy, and strengthens the bonds of community. And whereas Bike Texas, City of Bastrop Parks and Recreation, Visit Bastrop, Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, City of Bastrop Police, Schools, Health Agencies, and Cycling Groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May. And whereas we encourage residents to ride with care all year round, share the road, and discover Bastrop's beauty by bike. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-five, as Bike Month in the city of Bastrop and invite all residents to celebrate the beauty of our towns on two, our town on two wheels. And this has the city's seal attached and a signature. And so this is now finished.
I just wanted to thank Mark for coming on the last second notice from Austin to come celebrate this and also warn everybody that the MS-150 is coming through town on Saturday, and there'll be a couple of thousand bike riders, and they have raised approximately ten million dollars.
Wow.
So for MS. So come see the show on Saturday as it comes through town for a long time.
How, or where, or where is it coming through town?
Where's the bike?
Along Chestnut.
Down Chestnut Street, yeah. It comes right through the middle, right through the middle.
Jimmy, you're one of the two thousand, aren't you? That we're going to be ringing our bells for? So when you see Jimmy, make sure you ring that bell.
More cowbell.
Jimmy, can you tell people what the one fifty stands for?
It's a hundred and fifty mile bike ride.
Yeah.
It's a two-day event. It goes from, it used to start in Houston, ended in Austin, now it goes to Austin and Houston both and ends at College Station at Kyle Field.
It's a hundred and fifty miles, y'all.
Wow. Can you tell us a little bit more about your organization?
Thank you, Mayor. Bike Texas was formed in nineteen ninety-one, and as I said, it's a advocacy organization for access for bicycles. And also, we work just as much for pedestrians, too, in, in the state of Texas. We have educational materials for teachers to work with kids to teach bike and pedestrian safety. And we also have, I just wanted to mention, a conference called Texas Trails and Active Transportation Conference every other year, not during the Ledge session, during the Ledge session, we just walk around in suits. And it's for leaders, you know, political leaders in the city, city councils, legislators, and county officials, for engineers, for planners, for teachers, for principals. And it's a three-day conference, and it's usually in one of the larger cities in Texas. We had the first one just last fall in Austin, first one since the pandemic. And it'll be in places in the future like Fort Worth, Dallas, San Antonio, Corpus Christi, Galveston, Houston, you know, El Paso, the large cities. So we'd like to, you know, let you know when the next one comes around, and maybe you could send some folks from really any level of government, including all the folks we saw today, the, the folks who make the city, you know, infrastructure run, to that. So we'll keep in touch.
Thank you.
Can we ring the bell?
Sure. And so the next one is World Migratory Bird Day. Oh, do we have guests? Excellent.
This is also Councilmember Meyer and Councilmember Fossler, proclamation for World Migratory Bird Day. So do either of you care to say anything?
I already told you everything that's happening next weekend. Be sure to come.
So we have a proclamation of the city of Bastrop, Texas, whereas World Migratory Bird Day is a campaign to raise awareness for the conservation of migratory birds and the habitats they live in. And whereas migratory birds undertake incredible journeys across continents, connecting ecosystems and contributing to the vibrant biodiversity of our planet. And whereas these remarkable creatures face increasing threats from habitat loss, pollution, and the growing urbanization of our world. And whereas the twenty twenty-five theme of World Migratory Bird Day, Shared Spaces, Creating Bird-Friendly Cities and Communities, recognizes the critical need to integrate birds into our built environment. And whereas by embracing bird-friendly practices such as planting native vegetation, making windows safe for birds, and reducing light pollution, we can create healthier and more resilient communities for both people and birds. And so therefore, we do hereby proclaim May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as World Migratory Bird Day in the city of Bastrop and encourage everyone to take part in Bastrop Bird Lover Weekend on May second and third, twenty twenty-five, in downtown Bastrop, as we celebrate World Migratory Bird Day together. And this has the seal of the city and a signature on it, so this is now official.
We've got the president of Bird City Bastrop and Audubon here and all of our Audubon members, so you're welcome to say something. Thank you so much. You're welcome to speak if you like.
Oh, thanks.
You, you put this together, you put this whole program together.
I would add one thing. Spring migration's been underway for a couple of months now, and will go on for a couple more months. And there are millions of birds passing over Bastrop every night at this time, this time of year. We're almost at peak migration. So if you can, research Lights Out Texas, turn out as many lights as you can at night to help the migrating birds because they become disoriented, they could run into buildings and be killed. So if you could, just turn out as many lights as you can and help the birds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't let that go. I'm Luke Thompson, I'm president of the Bastrop Audubon Society. Last night, I was speaking to the master naturalists here in town and read something online, a little bit of research. We had over two hundred million birds fly through Bastrop County last night.
Did you count them?
They fly at night. I didn't, but the lidars do, the, the weather radars are able to count them.
Wow.
And eighty-five percent of our birds fly at night when they're migrating through here, and we're a major part of the, of the flyway for North America. Thank you.
Presentation. Ms. Joyce.
I am here to present a Parklet Pilot Program idea. And this is just the first time we're bringing this forward. It's, the idea today is to kind of get your feedback, see what you think, kind of open up the discussion for the public to also hear this as well, and then continue working through this and what this would look like for our downtown. So to get us started, I wanted to back us up a little bit and explain that this Parklet Program is part of a bigger idea of a placemaking initiative. So a couple of months ago, I was approached about how do we start working on placemaking? And so- And so first, I wanted to define what placemaking is, because it's kind of a unique word. It's a newer concept in the last couple of years. But essentially, placemaking is creating a place for people. It's creating a place for people to come and collaborate in a safe environment and make the environment their own and therefore safe for people. So a lot of things, there's a lot of different placemaking initiatives, but the number one I want, number one I want to get into today is parklet. So before I jump into that, has anyone heard of the term parklet? All right. Okay. So a parklet is essentially this little pop-up park in a parking space. So they basically are just a small modular outdoor seating space that can be popped up in front of businesses. They're common in downtowns. They've kind of taken a lot of bigger towns by storm, especially during COVID. We've seen a lot of these popping up as a space to be outdoors during COVID when we couldn't be inside. So there are two different uses for parklets that are commonly used. On the left hand is for business use, for outdoor seating, and then the right is for public use, making them more of a pop-up park, just a gathering space. To get a little bit more in-depth, the, on the business side of things, which would be tonight's my preferred use, is what I'd propose we move forward with, but of course, the backup is the public. The idea here would be that businesses would lease these parklets. The city would essentially, for the pilot program, so I'll start with just the pilot program. The idea here would be that the city would have this kit or a parklet built, and then a business would lease the kit for the season and utilize it as extended patio space. On the flip side, it could be just used as parklet, public space, just pop them up on the block, not designated or tied to any business specifically, just an open gathering space. There are a couple towns close to us. San Marcos has implemented a really successful parklet program, and Denton, Texas, as well. Hardwick, Vermont, they're another Main Street program. So I pulled from, pulled some information from them, but they have a really strong program, and they're a very similar size to our, to our community here. So I've got some information on that. I can definitely share that with you guys a little bit more in tune. But to get into what the cost would look like, there's kind of two options here. The first one would be, there's a company called Arc Track, which has been commonly used in multiple cities, and it's essentially a kit you buy, and it has everything that you need. It's got the, and that is an example there in that picture. It's got the planters already put in, it's got like the kit that rolls out, the railings, everything you need for this parklet. On the flip side, we're home ground. I think we could definitely partner with our school, bring in some local carpenters, and build them out ourselves, make them a little bit more unique to us. And then the maintenance of them, so again, this would be, in an ideal world, leased to a business. So the business would be responsible for maintaining them while they have them. However, I'll get into it a little bit more further on, but we would also have essentially a fee in their, like their deposit to be put down. And so if anything becomes broken or anything needs to be replaced at the end of the lease, we would use that deposit at that time to fix that. A little bit more continued, some unique things that I think we could plug into ours and make them a little bit more unique. I haven't seen anyone else doing this yet, but it'd be really cool. We already have a great relationship with our master gardeners. They take care of our beautiful, beautiful planters downtown. And that's a big, sometimes can be a big burden on the business owners to be upkeeping those. So just including those planters in part of our rounds to making sure that we're having beautiful green space, more green space added to our downtown, and you know, making us more bird-friendly, ideally. I think something else that we could implement on them are solar lights. That would be like strung on, that pop-up on at nighttime. I think something we all struggle with as well is patio season tends to get cut a little short around here between July and August. So something unique that we could do is implement a misting system on there, as well as shade sails on top to hopefully expand our patio season throughout those hot, hot months. And then I've got some grant opportunities here listed that I could potentially go after, that these, these four grants specifically really focus and push for placemaking initiatives. So these grants are specifically for things that create places for your people, specifically in downtown, since we are a Main Street community. This is that fee schedule that I was starting to mention earlier. This would be kind of the breakdown or like the process that, that we would go through. Essentially, if a business was interested in it, we would, they'd come forward with an application fee, they'd play their deposit, there would be a rental fee for them for the hypothetically five months that they have it. And then we would also include a beautification fee. And what that beautification fee is going towards is the plants that would be placed in that, in their planters and keeping up with those. Insurance would be required on the business itself. So they would take over full ownership of it. It is their space while they're leasing it. City would not be liable for anything that happens on that space. It's them taking over that ownership, and they would name us as covered. So some safety and logistic things that kind of come up with parklets, they have to be ADA compliant. So it's kind of hard to tell in that picture or any of the other pictures I've showed you, but the way that these work is they bump pretty close up to the curb, and then they have essentially a ramp that crosses over. But these parklets are lifted up to be like in, in line with the curb, so they're still allowing for drainage and all of that. That doesn't get affected in this. There would be safety measures around the outsides. I'm going to draw a blank on the name, but essentially, we could put up balusters, not balusters, is that the right word I'm looking for? Like concrete barriers around the edge of it to, of course, hopefully keep cars away. A lot of the communities that I touched base with and called on this, if they had very many issues, some with tighter downtowns than we have, and they haven't had any issues, a lot of employees, the orange cones, the taller cones, and they said they haven't really had very many issues. Of course, there's still a chance, but we would take some precautions to make sure that that doesn't happen. I did contact Text Dot as well. A couple of our businesses are pretty close to Chestnut there, and so we sit back for far enough that that wouldn't be an issue. And then another thing that came up in my research was TABC compliance, because the idea would be that they're utilizing this space as patio seating and serving beer, wine, drinks. And TABC, again, has done this with several other communities. The only requirement, beer and wine are okay because those are already allowable to go, but the mixed-use beverage licenses, the business would just have to expand their boundaries to allow that in that space. So they didn't seem too concerned about it. Here's just a few examples of some potential locations. The idea really here is to create a streamlined pedestrian walkway while having designated outdoor space. Sometimes our sidewalks, while they're beautiful and expanded, they get a little bit tight, and we don't want to discourage our businesses from having outdoor seating or like enjoying that. So these parklets would kind of offer a unique solution to both of those. So the question, everyone's wondering, I know, parking. You're going to potentially take more parking, Michaela? That's crazy. But I kind of pulled this up, and we've been talking about parking a lot in downtown. And while parking is a major issue, and we've got to put a bigger focus on it, because even if I take away two, two or three spots here, parking, parking is becoming a bigger issue than, than we can even imagine, honestly. When we get, like, it's only going to keep growing because we're continuing to grow, of course. This screenshot is actually from the parking study that was done here in 2015, and it identified how many spots we had available in on-street and off-street parking, and they went through and did a whole peaking, parking study, and noted that at our peak time, when this, when this study was done, we only utilized 60% of our parking. The problem comes in is that we've been such a small town for so long, and of course, we're staying a small town, but we can no longer park a lot of times right in front of the business we're trying to walk into. Now, the Main Street manager in me says, that's better, because if you have to park a block down the road, chances are you're going to pop into one or two boutiques on your way as well. Something's going to catch your eye. But more importantly, what I want to acknowledge here is that we have some extra lots that, one, our signage isn't great downtown, directing people where those parking is, where that parking is. For example, that library parking lot down there has about, I think it was 73 spaces, and a lot of people don't realize it's there. That, and then two other things that we're working on is, I didn't number it, but the bottom right circle is the Bastrop County Lot. I've got an email and some correspondence in with the county to get some signage up over there that says, hey, you can park here after 5 o'clock, and you can park here on the weekends. A lot of people don't realize that they can park in that lot. So, and then same thing with across from the Pine Street Lot, the smaller lot, the city does lease that lot for parking. And again, we don't have very much parking up there that, that says, hey, park here. And then some other creative things that I'm working on is up on Spring Street, where Cano Real Estate is, that lot is primarily day-to-day business use, and they don't utilize it much after 5 o'clock or on the weekends either. So I'm having conversations with them to see if we could also utilize their space after 5 and on the weekends. But I also want to show you, oh, I didn't give you the updated one. I went and did some little research earlier. So you can walk almost anywhere in our downtown. So say I walked in the library, parked in the library, it is about a five-minute walk anywhere you're trying to go in our downtown. It is about .25 miles. Same thing if I parked in the county lot and I walked all over to Pop Hall's. It is less than a five-minute walk. In comparison, I'm sad I didn't put it on here, I mapped HEB, because, you know, we're all parking in the back at HEB right now. And it is about the same distance if you park in the back at HEB, and you walk in the front, and you migrate yourself over to the chicken in the back right corner. So I don't know, we're all doing it, you know? It's, you know, driving it, we all have to do it. So I know it's just getting tough because we are getting a little bit more busy, but honestly, when we go travel to other places, we kind of expect it. And I've managed to talk to a few, oh, there it is. Surprise, is that Colin? Colin's a wonder worker back there. So yeah, so just kind of a fun little comparison, one on the top left is the library all the way down Main, and the other one is from the county over. So .25 miles anywhere, and it's less than a five-minute walk. And then there's HEB, so. And I hate to say it, but I think it takes us longer to find a parking spot in HEB right now than if you just drive to the county lot and park. So, sorry, lost train of thought there. I was stressing that I have to go to HEB after this. So next steps here, again, this is just kind of an open discussion. It's a new concept, it's a new idea. I know it's stressful, but again, this is a pilot idea. So this is, the idea here is that we potentially get one of these up and going, we see how it goes, we talk to the business, we do some tracking metrics. A lot of communities, Chicago, one of their smaller neighborhood communities had implemented a parklet program, and all of the businesses that they had, that had done the parklet program had revenues that were up by 20% after the first year of utilizing their parklets. So I do think it is a really cool business incentive to get people out there utilizing this space, really kind of, when you drive by and you see people out front, it's a lively community. You just naturally feel that. It feels more vibrant. So just kind of what I'm doing is coming to you guys and wanting to gather your thoughts. And then from there, ideally, we move forward and we develop a policy and what that would look like, the ordinance and all of that, leasing terms. So again, this is kind of very early stages right now, so just want to hear your feedback.
You did read my mind.
Parking.
Parking. Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, Michaela. And I love that, really, I do. We might want to, because that parking survey that was in 2015, before the city took out parking spaces downtown, and we used to be pull-in, and then we had this wonderful idea that everybody knew how to parallel park in the City of Bastrop, and they don't. So we might want to just get updated number on, just, just to have the number right. The other question I had is the, it used to be a drive-through, but when Mr. Kansari bought the former First National Bank, and he closed off that drive-through area off Main, is there a way to make that little area kind of a parklet to, I mean, in addition to, of course, but that might be kind of cooler than just big orange cones that say stay away. I mean, that might be a space that might be welcoming, too. So that might be an added place.
Okay. Yeah, we can look at that.
Cool.
Mayor Purtem, I will say that I think one of the first things that Councilmember Meyer told me when she came into office was parking garage. And I will tell you, the Councilmember Meyer has probably brought it up every single month since the time she's been in office at our Tuesday morning meetings. So now that I have a little bit of time on my hands, one of the things that we're exploring is a tourism tour, is a tax increment reinvestment zone in the downtown. And I showed you guys last night at the BEDC meeting how a recapture of about $95,000 at 5% interest has a borrow of about 1.8 million. And if we think that a parking garage is upwards of $10 million, you can kind of see how the amount of revenue recapture would need to be. That's just one of the possibilities that would not have a negative impact to the property owners, as opposed to a public improvement district that we had been talking about when I got here, which is an additional tax to the property owners in the downtown area, making business expansion and retention in the downtown area a little bit more difficult.
Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. I, I think this is a great idea. I think our downtown is already vibrant, and, but I love going to downtowns where they have the little, kind of like a little patio area. My question was going to be about parking, so you addressed that. I think the shade and the misting is brilliant, if you can incorporate that into the proposal. My only other concern about using parking spaces, and even though it's, you can walk anywhere in downtown, I actually can walk across all of Bastrop in about an hour, if probably shorter than that. But handicap, we don't have enough handicap spaces downtown as it is, so if we're going to be taking up parking spaces, it's hard for them to walk. So when you're doing the proposal, can we look at putting some handicap spaces downtown as well?
Absolutely. And that goes back to the feasibility study. I've been in conversations with EDC, with Dory specifically, about maybe tag teaming, updating that parking feasibility study and addressing that. And when I was reviewing the 2015 study, it addressed handicap parking, and it said that we were slowly inching towards not having enough. So I'm sure we've, we've bypassed that, so prioritizing that, we can definitely look at that.
Councilperson Plunkett.
This is obviously something of real interest in. I, I would say, I'm going to say to you what I would say to Rhonda if she came to me with a new business idea. First of all, I want it to pay for itself. So that means we need to find a, you know, a business that's willing to be the guinea pig and, and see that, and see that this, you know, 20K or so outlay can be returned in a reasonable amount of time. And I think, you know, those are the kind of things that I'll going to be looking at, you know, and determining, you know, my support or whatever.
Perfect. Yeah, and I did come across a couple examples that had seen that, and I know I briefly talked about, one, it was talking about losing two spots, but you're generating 12 people an hour in that one parking spot. So I can definitely send you that follow-up, I think it's really interesting. But yes, I can work on that and have it brought back to you.
Generating 12 people an hour? I don't understand that phrase.
So where one parking spot would be, if you, well, it's two, it's two parking spots, when you have the tabling set up and you're being able to turn through 12 people sitting at that table.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, generating 12 people. It's like you're manufacturing them. I was like, I don't understand. Got it. Thank you. Councilperson Fossler.
This is great. Does the pilot program look like one business? Would we try it for one business, you think?
Again, looking at pricing and to see what that would realistically look like, get an idea of what we have funding-wise to do. It'd be great if we could do two on two opposite ends with two different kind of vibes, I'll call them. But starting with one would be first and foremost. If we could do two, that would be ideal, but I don't want to overdo it or push it too far. So starting with one would be probably the best. In a roundabout way, I just went back and forth, back and forth.
Well then, is that it?
Yeah, I will come back to you guys with some of that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Item 7B, Cultural Arts Commission, present for the arts presentation.
Still me. All right. Going the wrong way here? Yes, I am. Okay, so we've got something really unique to bring to you guys. Again, this is a lot like the last one, so just a work session, bringing this to you guys, get your feedback, get your thoughts, before we take any future steps forward. So has anyone heard of this project or this initiative? I see a couple head shakes. Okay, perfect. So the percent for the arts is a really cool thing that Texas adopted in the government code 44029, which basically allows municipalities to allocate 1% of capital improvement projects to the arts. So what we're doing is we're coming to you guys to ask that, to implement this 1% for the arts, so I'll get a little bit more into it. The benefits to the arts- Um, the benefits to the arts, to implementing, this seems a little bit tall. Now it's on. Okay, there we go. Um, some of the economic growth that arts can have in a community, um, Texas specifically in the culture, arts and culture section, um, has significantly increased with the state's economy, generating $7.3 billion in taxable sales and $459 million in sales tax revenue. Um, so incorporating art in a community has had a significant increase across the board. It's been something that people have started to really put a focus on, and then it also ties right back into placemaking initiatives. It creates that vibrant destination, it lowers crime rates and all that fun stuff. Um, of course, getting your artists involved, they are the most bubbly, energetic people that I have ever worked with, um, so they just can drive that community engagement home, it gets people involved, the color in a community really brightens people's day. Um, our, we'd be supporting our local artist and then it really starts to create that cultural identity. We always ha, we already have such a unique cultural and arts identity, but this could really just grow it and make us really stand out on the map. Um, we have a great river, we've got these birds, we've got so many great things going on, we should really be known for our arts and culture as well. So what implementation would look like for this is, coming back to you guys with a policy adoption, again, multiple, multiple communities across the state of Texas, Texas have already adopted this, um, so it'd be pretty, pretty convenient to be able to pool on some of our neighboring communities to kind of rip off and duplicate in a good way, that's what us Main Streeters call it. Um, we've seen some things that have worked, we've seen them, some other communities that have made some tweaks along the way, so we're coming in at a really good time, in my opinion, that some of the bumps have already been flushed out. So that'd be, coming back to you guys with that. Um, the way that this would work is, we would be looking at future capital projects, so any projects that exceed 250,000, we would take a look at. The, the idea is that we establish kind of a committee, uh, made up of internal staff, made up of a council member or two, and then, um, some artists as well, to look at those projects and be realistic, right? So if it's the bridge, for example, that's a great place to add in some art, how do we incorporate that and, and really activate the end caps of the bridge and maybe add a sculpture or something? Um, or, you know, but if it's, if it's a street in the middle of the edge of town, is it smart to put art out there? So just really making sure we're really being smart and being selective on where we're utilizing this percent for the arts. Um, once we selected a project, of course, we'd go into basically what we already do now with the arts, um, with Cultural Arts Commission, we'd put out an art call, receive those, um, submissions, and then go through and do a selection process and really decide what artwork we're putting where, um, to, to have that ready to go for the budget. And then, of course, we would be collaborating with TCA, we are, um, an accredited cultural arts, um, what is that word? District, there we go. Um, so we'd be able to rely on them a lot, they work with a lot of other programs or a lot of, a lot of other communities that have implemented this, so they would be really a huge helping hand in guiding us along the way and making sure we're not missing things, um, and really providing a lot of resources for us to navigate through this. Some case studies, Garland, Texas, um, recently-ish adopted a percent for the arts program, they just redid their whole downtown square, um, and utilized a lot of their, their percent for the arts to do a lot of really cool incorporated art. I think sometimes when people think of art, we mainly go to maybe murals and sculptures or statues, um, but art can be very usable, right? So that one in the top right corner is actually a shade structure, but it's got colored, um, awnings, so when it, when it pelts down in the sun, it kind of creates this really cool colorful sidewalk. Um, so there's just a really cool, there's some several, several different examples of this across the state, Austin has implemented it in multiple different places, and San Antonio has really kicked it in gear in the last couple of years. They have become a huge art destination, it's crazy, you can't turn down any block in San Antonio without art, and they implemented this percent for the arts. So financial considerations with this is, with that 1% allocation, and again, I'm not, I, so me and I were going through these numbers earlier and I'm not a huge money gal, not, I'm a money gal, but I'm not a numbers gal.
And I, I'm just, I'm just going to say up to 1%, because some of our projects are in the hundreds of millions of dollars. This is a, this is a funding source we used in Corpus Christi back since I, far back as I can remember, so.
Yes, up to 1%. You guys have that determination.
Up to 1%.
Up to 1%. Um, so kind of what that would look like in a, in a simpler version is, if we had a million-dollar project on the table, 10,000 of that would be allocated for arts. Um, and again, that's what the, that's, that is a 1% match right there, but again, it's up to. Um, in addition, though, we could be partnering tho, those funds with grants and donations. Again, we're TCA, um, so we can get some grant funding through them and then, of course, other grants out there, and then public-private partnerships, we already have some really good private relationships, um, so we could continue utilizing those, and then, of course, cultural arts is hotel tax funded, so we'd be tapping into that as well. Key steps for successful implementation here, um, full transparency, my commission wanted me to bring this to you guys a few months back and I kind of pushed the pause on it. Um, if we were potentially hypothetically, um, talking about a $10 million project, that's, that's a lot of money, that's $100,000. Um, and that's a lot to manage, you know, because that may not be just one art installation, it may be five, um, and that's five different artists potentially and five different procedures and implementation, and, and of course, I was the bad guy and kind of put our Bird Junction on hold a little bit because there were some behind-the-scenes things that we needed to get taken care of. So there's a lot of stuff that goes behind, goes on behind the scenes when it comes to installing art, um, and I know that this is going to be a little bit of a big undertaking staff-wise behind the scenes. So again, coming back to what I briefly mentioned skimmed by in my work plan conversation, was that that part-time coordinator for the Cultural Arts Committee or Commission, um, would oversee this proj, like these projects completely, it'd be managed by one person individually, and they would oversee the whole projects from start, start to finish, start to finish, um, because there's going to be things involved with budgeting and really tracking all that stuff, especially because it is tied to our capital improvement projects, you have to track that stuff, like, every penny matters in that stuff. So I just know it's going to be a, a big undertaking to be managing it, and so that's why we're going to be asking for that. And they'd also be, of course, assisting with all the other cultural arts stuff going on. But here's just some cool examples that I pulled up. Um, I put the bridge one under there because, you know, ideally, we're getting this really, this bridge is getting about to get redone. And a cool thing is that these projects would have to be within X amount of distance from the project, so it's directly tied to the projects. So I was like, hey, if we're doing the bridge upstairs, you know, downstairs, let's liven that up too as well. Um, there's like a bench with a statue on it, and I thought it'd be cool if, you know, we had a, one of our key Bastrop historic figures there and you could have, you know, lunch with them on the bench. The one to the right, the Olympic Plaza, that's, um, actually kind of an example of wayfinding, so how are we utilizing wayfinding? Um, the one on the right, the bottom right side is kind of more like a play structure, but it's, you know, it's really hands-on artwork, it's not just a mural or anything. Art can be used in many, multiple different ways, even to a matter of, hey, this area is kind of dark, we need to incorporate some lighting, okay, how do we make that a lighting art? And so, yeah, just multiple different things that we could do with it. Um, in conclusion, the Bastrop Cultural Arts Commission wants to move forward with asking you guys to adopt this up to 1%, percent for the arts, um, what you guys would want to put that on or however we work through that, again, today is just bringing this forward to you guys to get your feedback. So, any questions?
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you. Not really questions, Michaela, I just want to tell you what a pleasure it was working with you when I was liaison in the Main Street Downtown, and now Kevin gets to have that pleasure, but also, thank you so much.
It's terrible now.
Oh, poor guy.
But, uh, thank you so much for all the different hats you wear, you know, the Main Street Manager and the Cultural Arts Liaison, and, and you have brought to this town, since you've been the Main Street Manager, more, uh, you just brought more than we've had in so many years, so I just want to thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I think coming in, cultural arts kind of got shuffled around in some, in some spots, and they are truly such a dedicated group, and again, the most vibrant people that I know, so they deserve someone to be very, very dedicated to what they're doing, and I only expect nothing but the growth for that group in the next several years. Um, so I, while I'm wearing all the hats, I think we could be doing a lot better with, with an extra hat or two.
Councilperson Fosser.
So the 1% would, you think it could be only maintained by the extra human? Just making sure if we are agreeing to one or we like really agree to?
No, I would definitely, um, I, it would just maybe be a little bit slow and steady, easing into it. Um, we ideally, Main Street is, um, going to be bringing on a coordinator, a program coordinator to at least be helping Main Street juggle all the things. Um, so cultural arts, of course, me and that person would tag-team this effort and still get things done no matter what, I just want to lay the, the ground ahead that some, some grace period may be needed.
We want it to go well and be supported, I just.
Yes.
Just curious, and could the 1% fund any of the staffing?
From what I can tell, no, I don't think so.
No, no, you need an actual tangible, because a, at the underlying of all of this is a borrow, is a bond borrow, and that bond borrow has a deliverable that's required. You can, and I want to say sneak because that's the wrong word, there are administrative project management expenses, like we do charge off some of Elizabeth's time, et cetera, to projects, and from a project management perspective, but you wouldn't want to do that, because I, I'm going to tell you, it is up to 1%. There may be some projects that we're going to say no to simply because a borrow capacity isn't there, or there isn't something feasible that can happen. So I just want to make sure that we understand, while this may be approved, it's not going to be every single project. Like, you wouldn't want an art project at the wastewater treatment plant. You may want it if it's going to be a landscaping, you know, something like that, but, but the wastewater treatment plan is not normally accessible to the public, there are security concerns, and so an art installation where the public isn't available, I don't know would pass bond muster.
Gotcha. So this is a tool that many communities have used for a long, long, this is a tried-and-true tool, like any other hiccups or like unforeseen, like, are there any issues with it?
Let me tell you what the issue is always going to lie, and it's in the group I'm staring at right now. It's in the group I'm staring at right now, who's looking behind herself right now. Uh, it is, it is consensus on what is considered art. It is, it is truly consensus, that's, that's it, that's the problem that we run into, that I've run into, but the mechanics of that can be readily solved with what I'm going to say, a rubric of what, what the city prioritizes. We're a bird city, we may want to prioritize bird sculptures, bird landscaping, bird-safe lighting, those kinds of things, and so long as we have rules of the road, I think we'll be fine. The problem becomes when the rules are so nebulous that everything is art.
We can, we've worked it out so far, I'm quite sure we can work it out. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, guys.
We're going to move on to item 8A, receive a presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending March 2025.
Good evening, Council. Feel like I really need to bring the energy after, Michaela. No pressure. Um, I'll happily pull out any slide from the deck if you want to discuss directly, but here is a brief overview of the March unaudited, um, numbers. All funds have a positive bottom line with revenue exceeding forecast by 8% and expenditures coming in under forecast by 21%. To highlight some attention in revenue, sales tax continues to run extremely close to forecasted. Um, we're within a $10,000 difference between forecast and actual, so it's pretty spot-on. Property tax proceeds are over forecast by 2.86% or 154K. This is generally coming in as delinquent property tax sales proceeds, so that is impacting both the debt and Hunter's Crossing pit, but we're having some late stragglers there. Impact fee revenues continue to remain above forecast for the second, second consecutive month, so that's nice to report. Water wastewater proceeds exceed forecast by 7.2% or 390K. Electric revenue is 2% below forecast, they're still running really tight to forecast, that has been the trend with them for the past few months. Hot proceeds are exceeding forecast by 18%. Development services is exceeding forecast by 33%, and street maintenance fund is exceeding projections by 17%. To highlight some areas of expenditures, general fund expenditures are 84.4 to forecast below. Um, water wastewater fund expenditures are running 97.5% to forecast. Um, there is a budget amendment coming through, um, in the consent that pertains to water fund, so that would improve that number a little bit if those budget amendments are approved. Electric expenses are 3.2 below forecast, um, that is helping contribute to the fund's positive bottom line since their revenue is running close to projection. Hot funds are 86.2 below forecast, as well as development services that are 93% below forecast. So, revenue is exceeding forecast, expenditures are below forecast across all funds.
Mayor and Council, I want to draw your attention, last night at the BEDC, we did, um, catch a correction, Mayor Protam Kirkland, um, had wondered why the BEDC revenues were higher than the, um, street maintenance fund revenues, so we did make a correction, there's a journal entry that's going to be coming, uh, to you, the street maintenance fund is a little bit healthier than we had anticipated.
Okay, any questions from Council?
Thank you.
Okay.
And I wish Councilmember Crouch were here, because I used to get yelled at about impact fees all of the time. This is two months in a row.
We're going to move on to item nine, citizens' comments, uh, we're going to start with Maria Montoya Staiton. She left, okay. Next is Carol Spencer.
Hi, Carol Spencer, 126 Brussels Drive, Cedar Creek. I just want to start by saying that, um, I've had several comments about why I come to these meetings, and I just took a quick look at my calendar for the last month, and six out of seven days, I'm here. I spend my money here, I shop here, I eat here, I see doctors here, I drive here, I buy gas here, and so if you wonder why what you do is important to me, it's because I don't live here, but I have to deal with the traffic and everything else that goes on here, um, so it's important to me. Um, as for my comments, when the Bastrop City Council, um, I'm talking about item 10D, passed a $600,000, Chapter 380 grant agreement on first reading on April 8th, there was no record of a BEBD Frontage Road LLC when you log in at the Texas Secretary of State's office, and as recently as April 19th, three days ago, there was no record of that LLC. And I have a friend who started an LLC and it shows up relatively quickly, uh, when you do so. So that concerned me. Um, today, as you are poised to adopt a $600,000 grant agreement on second reading, the entity still doesn't formally exist. The application for this LLC is listed on the Secretary of State's website as pending review. Um, I do have a screenshot to show that that is in fact the case at 3:38 today. So because of that, you don't know who the members or managers are of this LLC, whether it's specific people or whether it's another LLC. You can't see their certificate of formation, Section 3B of this contract is not verifiable because until this LLC is approved by the Secretary of State, there's no link that functions on the Secretary of State's website. And additionally, the name of the LLC and the title of the ordinance is wrong, and the title is the only place in the ordinance that the name of the LLC to which you are giving $600,000 appears. So I leave it to your attorney as to whether these are issues, as to whether the LLC that you're contracting with should be correctly identified in the ordinance. Logic says to me that it should be. It would also seem to be therefore premature to move forward with a second reading and an approval of this contract until the LLC is actually showing is approved and the ordinance is titled correctly. Thank you. as approved and the ordinance is titled correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Next is Dax Havelak.
Dax Havelak, 217 Smithville, because I have my Bastrop Pride hat on today. Last year, we were awarded $6,000 of hot funds through Visit Bastrop. Unfortunately, after our event, our vice chair departed, and we were not able to complete our post-review, which is a requirement of hot funds. That's how we prove that we spent the correct amount of advertising money and all that. So Visit Bastrop, if you want to raise your fingers, how many times they tried to contact us to reconcile the 6,000? Zero. We received no emails, no follow-ups, nothing to say, hey, it's 30 days after the event, 60 days after the event, 90 days after the event. What's going on? Where is that money? A year passed. It's now my responsibility to apply for hot funds. I do, mid-February. And after a month of an email, a phone call, a phone call to set up a meeting, and then the final email, there was silence from the Visit Bastrop single person, the staffing. And when we finally had our voice meeting, talked about that since we hadn't completed prior paperwork, they were just going to silently deny our request. Two days, I could grab all my bank statements, present it, have all my receipts for spending, reconcile the 6,000. We were still denied because we can't put heads in beds, which is fine. That's a fun angle for us to work on. So Bastrop Pride, as one of our, you know, self-appointed guinea pigs within the counties and our cities, it's not to say unreasonable that we've had similar forgotten issues or forgotten placements within application city efforts. So hopefully, Visit Bastrop has been reconciled on all of the money and spending from the last couple years, and our $6,000 was the only instance that Visit Bastrop never followed up. Hopefully, it's just 6,000. If not, I would recommend a sniff test of Visit Bastrop to see if they have the staffing required to follow up on every event, the staffing to go after and reconcile each missing piece of paperwork from the events. Because if you, if I'm not the only organization that has not been followed up on, there might be pending money that is just not proven from the organization. There might be other organizations that are trying to apply, who are not being communicated with, that they're just being denied because they don't know they haven't been able to do paperwork. So my issue, my worry is that Visit Bastrop is not being assisted enough to cater to the needs of the, last year there was eight organizations for hot funding, previous year was 14. Visit Bastrop might need a little bit more help for case management, follow-up, and overall reconciliation of any types of funding. So, thank you. Let's continue having a great year.
Dex.
So the, the last citizen's comment is Lyle Nelson, but we have a complication. And that is that until a replacement mayor is sworn in and takes the gavel, the Open Meetings Act continues to apply to Mr. Nelson. And so, since this item, I don't know what it is, but it's in citizens' comments, it is not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. Because uniquely, the Open Meetings Act continues to apply to you for a few more weeks. If your comment is about an agenda item, then we can shift it to something else and do it in that way.
My comment is on the citizen comment side, is outlined in the city charter, as well as in the policy of procedures for city council.
Okay.
Whether or not the, I'm unsure what Open Meetings Act has to do with me as a citizen making a comment or a citizen comment.
Please step away from the microphone, sir.
Do I not get an explanation?
I gave you the explanation.
No, you provided me a statement, not an explanation, sir. So you're stifling the ability of a citizen to speak in citizen comments. Is that, is that what I understand?
Stan, could you ring in, please?
Okay. If the items are for governing body deliberation, these are agenda items, the presiding officer in short has discretion on control of the meeting regarding members of the governing body. That would include vacant seats that are not yet filled, at least until the vacancy is filled. So, members of the governing body and agenda items. Now, if it's not an agenda item, then that would fall under the capacity as a private citizen.
So, thank you.
If it's not an agenda item, I'm speaking in our citizen comments.
You, as a continuing member of this body, you don't have the ability to speak under citizens' comments without violating the Open Meetings Act. The, and in fact, it becomes a crime. Like, it literally, you will be committing a criminal act because you will be speaking about something that's not on an agenda and as a member of the body.
You have no idea what I'm speaking on, sir. So how can you say I'll be in violation of anything?
Because you've signed up under citizens' comments.
And I'm a citizen of the city of Bastrop.
Please take your seat.
So you are restricting my ability to speak as a citizen under citizen comments pursuant to our city charter?
Moving on to item number 10, consent agenda.
Thank you.
So, council, on the consent agenda, we have items here. Does anyone need to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
I was going to pull 10D and 10G.
Okay. Okay. So, Madam Assistant City Secretary, will you please read 10A, 10B, 10C? And 10J is an ordinance.
Item 10A, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-17, amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Animal Control, Article 2.02, Vaccination and Licensing of Dogs and Cats, Article 2.04, Impoundment, removing Section 2.02.004, License, Tag, and Collar, amending Section 2.02.008, Licensing and Fees to Pet Registration Requirement and Removing Subsection A through C, removing Section 2.04.006, Confinement of Female Dogs and Cats during estrus. This item is also referred to as the Microchipping Ordinance. Item 10B, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance, of ordinance number 2025-41, amending Chapter 15, Article 15.01, Cemeteries of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances to reflect various updates to language and appropriations for the operation of a columbarium. Item 10C, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-42, Engaging Train Technologies Under the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchase Agreement by Means of a Project Development Agreement, PDA, to begin a design, build, construction approach for the city of Bastrop for the design and construction of a new high-efficiency wastewater treatment facility to meet the city's requirements for continued growth and other as-needed projects related to water and wastewater. And item 10J, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-47, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025 in accordance with existing statutory requirements appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A and moved to include on the May 13, 2025 consent agenda for a second reading.
Thank you, council. We have, one, one second. I want to, I wanted to sort of make it clear what we're going to pass, and then we'll absolutely do that. So, we are going to be approving items 10A, 10B, 10C, not 10D, we're going to cover that one separately, 10E and 10F, 10G will be covered separately, 10H and 10I. So all of those items with this motion. And 10J as well, because she read that one. Yes, correct. Thank you very much. Okay, now.
Repeat. Move to approve.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilperson Lee, a second from Plunkett. Any other discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, so now, we will go back to item 10D. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance 2024-46, a Chapter 380 agreement with BEBD Frontage Road LLC in the city of Bastrop in an amount not to exceed $600,000 for improvements at Highway 71 adjacent to Burleson Crossing East, retail development located at Highway 71 and at Burleson Road. Ms. Foster.
I was going to pull this off anyway to, I had caught that the title wasn't correct in the ordinance, and I had sent that request in, but it, but it wasn't printed, unfortunately. So the reason I pulled it is to call, is to correct the frontage, add the word road in the top of the ordinance. And then also, my motion from last time was, when we approved it, it was that all, it was any, what do you call it, changes, work orders, change orders, come to council as well for approval. So I just wanted to make sure those were spoken on the second reading as well. But after citizen comments, I do have concerns about the LLC, and I think Mr. Durman wanted to speak. Are you open for that?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's do that. Mr. Durman?
So, yeah, tell us about the BEBD Frontage Road LLC. Okay. Steve Durman, 13220 Carroll Oakway. First, Carrie, we did add, with Stan and Charles' help, about bringing change orders above, change orders.
Thank you. I was going to ask.
Above the $1 million into you all for approval, if there's any change. So that has been added. The second thing is, the BEBD Frontage Road is a, we just filed it, we were not going to file this. This is an LLC. This is only a function. I'm going to step back, because I'm going to explain some things. There seems to be a lot of confusion in this city on stuff. I agreed, when we did all our stuff, that I would spend about, it's ended up being almost $5 million. I'm building wagon wheel drive, and widening the Burleson Crossing intersection, and adding a second left turn lane, which is in my plans. Also giving more land for Blakie Drive for you guys to build in the back. In exchange, I was going to get a driveway cut. Somewhere along the line, it became very apparent that the city and Tech Dot would really like to see a frontage road built along the front of our property, all the way back to settlement, because of the congestion that is already at Burleson Crossing. It's the only way underneath the freeway and the longways, all the way out to 20. So somewhere down the line, that got added as a, as an idea of what they wanted. You all, three years ago, agreed, not you all personally, but there was a, agreed that you would fund that. And it was different ways, and it took us a long time to get through the B3 code. We finally got through it, and it cost about $750,000 to myself to get through it. But we did. And now we're building the shopping center. So what this entity is set up for is just to function. Instead of you guys having to build it and just funding it, we are going to add it into, into our work. And so, I went ahead in anticipating that we were going to figure this out a little bit sooner than we did, getting plans approved by Tech Dot, which readily wants to do this. They're giving the right of way. That's their deal, and they built the sidewalk. You guys are funding it. I'm being as the functionary, the general contractor, so to speak. So this LLC is, is been formed now. It was presented today. That's why she said it's pending. I did not want to do it until we were ready to sign this thing, getting it approved. Because I didn't need an entity out there that is just for this function. So that's what it's for. It's been formed. It's just, it's going to be myself as the manager, and my partner Randy Bassett. It's the same people building the shopping center. It's the same people that signed on the dotted line for $35 million to build this shopping center, and had placed $19 million more up for cash for the project. So, we are pretty much set to build this thing and build it correctly and get it done right, because we need, we need the entrance for our deal. The frontage road itself is going to function really well for all the, when we did the TIA study, it was determined that it was growing rapidly. But all the traffic coming down from behind to get through there from Blakie, and that's why Blakie's so important, to get you guys, get it built and get it over to Austin Highway, it, it was approaching 50% of the traffic through that intersection. And that had grown in five years from about 38%. So it is massively building, coming down 969 and coming underneath that freeway, which all it does is clog up everything for everybody. And that's what we're trying to fix. So that's what this is for, and that's where we are with the LLC. So, I would appreciate if we get through through this, and we will get the agreement straightened out and cleaned up, as it usually technically gets reviewed after the approvals to make sure it is correct. And I was suggesting we would get that done. But that's the answer. And thank you for the time.
How long until this BEBD Frontage Road LLC has completed its creation process?
Probably this afternoon it was, probably this more, or tomorrow, tomorrow morning. It's a function of, you just, we went ahead three months ago and determined that this name was available. And then you, and then you place it, and our attorney, Tally Williams, placed it right before lunch. And you put it with the Secretary of State, and it usually takes 24 hours. And then you're, if they just check to make sure the name, you pay the fees. We already did all that. And then, you place the certification of letters after it's been formed. All we're using is a form, it's a couple-page form that'll go in afterwards. And that will show the names of my name and Randy's name. So, basically, it's formed. We're not signing this tonight, I don't think. So that's what, we were going to wait and then sign it after it was formed.
Mayor Protam, I did ask the city attorney, so would you allow him to weigh in, please?
Oh, sure.
Yes, this is all very typical of transactions, kind of like a real estate closing, where there may be LLCs created that are utilized at closing. We want the agreement to be enforceable against the entity that gets funds and uses the funds and implements the contract. So we have vetted it, along with the attorney representing the developer, and the form is fine, and there are no concerns on the facts presented.
John, one more thing on this, on the LLC. The reason why it was created this way is, I cannot have it as part of one of my companies already, because we have debt. And we have things already in place. So to do this properly, we had to keep it separate, which is what you all want. Because you want to make sure that the funds are not mingled and everything else. So this was set up specifically after having much consideration with attorneys, not just Tally, my, one of my attorneys, my other attorney that does on the financing end, Louis Silver out of Houston. So it was set up for that way, to keep it so that it's clean, that it's transparent, and that it doesn't come back on anything else. It's just, just dollars are for this, this portion of the roadway. And that's what we did.
Ms. Foster, your original concerns, can you repeat those again, please?
Yes. In the ordinance header, it needs to, we need to insert the word road between frontage and LLC. And in, I guess it's in the contract already, but it just didn't make it into our packet. It was a motion to approve with the change, with any change work orders over a million to come back to council. It was any change work orders, right?
Do you want me, I'm not sure you want any change. Do you want me, I'm not sure you want any change orders, you're talking about-
It's not any change orders, no. We don't want that. I'd love to see the language you landed on, because it didn't make it to our packet.
I thought it was in the last draft, I'm sorry. If due to unforeseen site conditions, the final plans are required to include modification and revisions that cause an extra cost to exceed, the city shall be responsible for such costs after presentation and approval after outlining the same to the city council. Is what's, is the language Charles has been added.
Yes, it was very short and sweet. It was like one sentence that was inserted.
Okay, yeah, we didn't, we didn't get this, that's why. Well, let's see. No, okay.
Yeah, the specific language is, after presentation and approval of a change order, outlining same to the city council, and then deleting some extra language that actually was to the benefit of the city. So, it basically brought all overages, any excess costs-
Can you send me that contact and put it up on the screen?
Back to the city council for approval of a change order, which is very broad.
Now, one last thing. We don't foresee any unforeseen, but you don't know until you tear up the road. And at that point, we're all going to be talking about it. But I don't foresee it. We have done some potholing, we have looked at things. We have put contingency money in the budget for a few of the unforeseen things we make encounter, which, like if we have, like I told you last time, if there's, if we have to encapsulate a gas line that isn't deep enough, that was supposed to be deeper, something like that for the traffic. But, that's where we're at.
I just want to make sure the words, the words here match the words here. And right now, they aren't, but they will.
Well, Stan, can you send me that language? I want to put it up on the screen for posterity's sake, so we can at least record it.
And there was some deletions of some stuff also?
I don't have it in my box, it's with legal.
It was, I think it was in the language of tariffs and stuff like that, and I'm already saying, it's in the budgets, hard budgets, he, you know, will it.
Would there be an issue, since we're considering scheduling, since we are scheduling a special meeting on April 29th, could we delay this second reading until April 29th? That's like, just next Tuesday? Does that, that way we can have-
I have a big problem. I have a big problem with continuing delay. Let's just get this right tonight, and either vote or not, yes or no? That's how, that's what you power you have tonight, that's what we can do. But I am not for continually delaying when our attorney is explaining, we're going to have it on the screen, so let's just make a decision. That's the power of your vote.
I'm sorry, Carrie, I was talking to the attorney. Why were you wanting to delay it?
Because we haven't seen the language.
Oh, he had, he's, that's what they're putting up on the screen. He showed it to me, so I understand.
And also the pending LLC, like have you reviewed-
I do have a question, you know, concerned about the pending LLC piece.
Yes, that's something that's very common. And the key fact is that the contract is enforceable against the entity that's being funded and will be responsible for implementing the project. We want the contract to be enforceable, and we have confirmation, adequate confirmation, that, you know, he is the agent representing that company, and the public record is full of information and evidence that ties the two together. So, on those facts, there are no concerns.
Cheryl, this is very common on a real estate transaction, where you last second at the end to set up a single asset entity for that purpose, either purchasing that property, in this case, or building it. But I did wait, because I've set up them before, and then we have to change it. That's a lot more difficult, and that takes longer with the state. So, that's why. But it's me.
So, I think this revision probably came across after the agenda was posted and the agenda packet was put together, but this, this is the language.
So, even the header has changed. Have we changed from increased costs or cost savings to extraordinary costs or conditions? This is a totally different header? No? I just want to know what all is, I want to know everything that's been changed if we're approving it.
No, this is just subsection A that you're looking at. Above that was not changed.
So, those words, extraordinary costs or conditions, where did those words come from?
As far as I know, they've been there, Carrie.
They're not on there.
Well, the attorneys got this done about last Thursday, so I read the language. That was all I did.
But I want to vote on the language.
Andres, can you, we're going to, we're going to put up a dual screen, Carrie. We're going to put up a dual screen.
My problem is, I want to make sure that the words we agree to today are the words that we are agreeing to. I don't have any problem with everything, anything you've explained tonight. I just, I'm a words girl. All of my feedback is always about making sure the words in the room match what we vote on.
Okay, well, Charles-
Just because Stan has it, doesn't mean we have it.
Stan and Charles, get the document correct.
We're going to put up a side-by-side.
Thank you.
It is on page four. Nope, you went too far, page four. It's section seven, extraordinary costs or conditions.
It says increased costs or cost savings.
Is this the revised one, or the one we had in the packet? Which one are we looking at right now?
That is the revised.
This is the revised.
Yep.
And you're getting-
So, let's, let's put up the one that's in the packet, in the agenda packet, Colin? No, it's going to be in the Agenda Share folder. It's going to be page 71 of the agenda packet.
See, that language was removed. That was what you were talking about last deal, and then this language was added. That was done by, Stan, was it you, or was it Charles that did the additional language and then sent it to me on, or Tally on Thursday?
On the 17th.
I got it last Thursday.
So, on page 71, it says, the city shall, final plans include modifications, revisions that cause the cost to construct the Highway 71 Frontage Road improvements to exceed $1 million, the city shall be responsible for such excess costs. And that is, sorry, Colin. Sorry, I'm trying to go to page four, right before the $1 million at the bottom of that paragraph A. The city should, it's right after the words of $1 million. Go up to section seven. Right there. Right after the word $1 million, the city shall be responsible for each, for such excess costs. This is what you had concerns with last time, Councilmember Fosser? And so, the contract changed to now, Colin, can you bring up the new one? Extraordinary costs or conditions, the title changed, and then that paragraph changed significantly, and it says, the city shall be responsible for such, after presentation and approval by the city council.
Okay, so, there's a deletion after the change order sentence. The deletion occurs after, so prior to the insertion on change orders, there's no revisions to that paragraph. The only, the only further changes is a deletion, which is not necessary anymore after you place the approval of change orders, which is very broad. Everything that comes after that is not necessary. Has things like tariffs, embargoes, trade disputes, things that the council would be concerned about, that would want to have exceptions to cost increases, all those things can be factored in, because a change order is going to have to be broad anyway. So, once you get to change order, there's no reason to have that extraneous language.
I'm fine with that. Was anything else in the contract change?
That's the only-
That's the only thing? In the header? Okay. Okay.
Are we okay? Do you need more, anything else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Meyer. Ms. Fosser, or Councilperson Fosser for discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that ordinance header is also, the LLC name is updated in the ordinance header. We need the word road inserted in there. It's not on the development agreement, it's on the ordinance that's before it in the packet. The motion needs to have that as well, please. I caught it last time, but it was not in the packet, sorry.
It's missing right there. No, no, I'm pointing out where it's missing.
Do you want to offer a friendly amendment?
Yeah, could I offer a friendly amendment to change the ordinance name to the full LLC name?
I'll accept that.
Let's do it.
Okay, so the friendly amendment from Councilperson Fosser to insert road after the word frontage in the ordinance on page 66 of the packet has been accepted. So, that is now part of the motion that's on the table to approve. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, item 10D is approved unanimously. We're going on to item 10G. Consider an act on resolution number R2025-84, approving the acceptance of a donation to the city of Bashrop Police Department in the amount of $10,000, and a donation to the city of Bashrop Fire Department in the amount of $10,000 from LS Electric America. Councilperson Fosser.
I just wanted to thank them publicly, because it's wonderful, that's all. Thank you, LS Electric America, for the two donations.
Sure, I'll give a little background. On April 14th, we had the, we participated in the ribbon cutting, as we spoke earlier, for the grand opening of LS Electric, for the Americas, LS Electric America Bashrop Campus, located in Technology Drive in the Business Park. During the presentation, LS Electric presented the Bashrop Police Department and the Bashrop Fire Department, each with $10,000 donation. And so, the total donation is $20,000. And so, yes, in order to accept, we have to put a resolution forward, and then, but yes, we do want to welcome, give them thanks for the donation to the two. Chief, or chief, either chief want to say anything? Oh, she's calling one out, so.
The fire chief actually wants to give a speech. For the most part, we just wanted to say how extremely grateful we are, and we're extremely happy that this company is so proactive in our community and also recognized all the officers and everybody else. So, we thank them very much.
Now, say it in Korean.
Thank you. A motion to approve.
Gamsanida. Okay, so, we have a motion to approve from Councilperson Fosser, and a tie that I'll give to Councilperson Lee on the second. This is for item 10G, approving the two donations from LS Electric. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We are now completed with the consent agenda, moving on to item 11A. Item for individual consideration, consider an act on resolution R2025-81, authorizing the city manager to approve amendment number two to the original professional services agreement with Kimley Horn for the design and construction phase services of Agnes Street Extension. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor Protem, counsel. Yes, we are moving, we're actually ahead of schedule on Agnes Street, so hopefully, we'll get a final date of when that's going to be opening. But part of the Agnes Street Extension, there is a street called Blacktail Drive. It's located, if you, let's see if I can make this work. Seton is located over here, this is the driveway to Seton that goes to 71. This is Agnes Street. This is the portion that we're adding right now, this portion here all down. This is Blacktail, so if you're on Agnes right now, you can look and see Blacktail, but they're not connected to each other. This was just not a part of the grant when we submitted it, so we are asking to amend Kimley Horn's contract to do a design, this is for design work only, of this connection between Blacktail and Agnes Street. So, we can see, once we get the design work, we can see what the estimated cost is for, since they're already mobilized, what that cost will be to add this portion into the contract. Any questions? So, you'll see one come back, if you approve this, you'll, after we get the design, you'll see an amendment to the contractor's work for this. So, you'll see this again at some point.
Makes a lot of sense to do it now, rather than later.
Yeah, it adds safety and everything. Awesome.
Motion to approve from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Meyer. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, 11A passes unanimously. That brings us on to item number 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn from Councilperson Lee, a second from Councilperson Plunkett. We are done. Thank you, Bashrop.